Call me, Councilman. June 21st, 7:00. I'm waiting to order. This is the agenda. We've got an amendment, Fourth of July, new business.
And I want to add a 10-minute executive session, non-elected personnel, to discuss potential hire.
And where would you like that?
Executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in? All opposed, passes five minutes. Any citizen comments? Kathleen Norman.
Hello, so I'm with Economic Development, and so this evening I wanted to talk about housing. So, one of the papers I have is more on information sheet. Our office was able to get kind of the raw data from the county appraisers office about all existing housing stock in the county. So, we've kind of analyzed that to see kind of what is the state of housing, to help inform more housing development. And so, kind of some of the information is, you know, 40% of our houses are over 100 years old throughout the county. Less than 4% were built within the past 20 years, and less than 13 within the past 50 years. And so, kind of the challenge is, we have a lot of old housing in the county, and we really haven't had a lot of new development. It really, our housing development kind of dropped off in the 1960s and never really picked back up. The biggest decade houses were built was the 1910s. And so, knowing that and knowing the challenge we have, I know like the land bank and the city has had to do a lot to tear away like the labated uninhabitable housing. Within the past 20 years, we've lost 225 or more units in the county from kind of that deterioration. And only on average had like two to three houses built. Some years we've had no houses built. The 90s was our worst decade for houses being built, with only 24 houses being built in the entire county in that decade. And there's a lot of factors that go into this. Some of this is what's affordable. The cost of existing housing is a lot less expensive than building new. Construction costs continue to rise. And so, that becomes kind of the challenge is how do we meet the needs of what's affordable? There's work being done somewhat to do. Some people have taken on rehab projects. Our office hasn't found that that's been the easiest way for us to be able to do work. There's not really funding for us to do rehabilitation. We're halfway through kind of our current 10-house construction, and there are income limitations on that due to where we could get funding to do the houses. We'd like to do another at least 10-house project, but in order to do that, we're going to need to have buy-in from the city and the county. And then that will allow us to go for a grant later this year. It's called moderate income housing. There's very little restrictions on that, given the wide range that it's within moderate income. And there's not a lot of ongoing compliance in the same way we have with kind of the low-income housing that we have currently under construction. So, at this point, the county commission has allocated $350,000 for us to look at carrying out this project. We're seeing if the cities would consider budgeting over a six-year period, an amount that would then guarantee a certain number of houses built. So, the buy-in would be less than having to potentially cover the full cost of a house, and there would be more in the town. But we're going to need that enable, in order to have the equity to be able to carry out the project. The goal would be to sell as many as possible, and what doesn't sell, we would then rent. And then, the more we can sell of, the more then we'd be able to continue to build. So, there will be kind of, we're still finding where the break even is in terms of, there's so much, seeing what equity we can kind of amount. So, like the county would be equity, if the cities buy in, that would be equity. And then going for the grant, and then there would need to be construction loan or other stuff to be able to carry it. And then being able to sell the houses again would be part of being able to do even more houses. So, we're looking at guaranteeing 10 houses that would be spread out of the county. The biggest thing is some of this is evolving, so it depends what communities choose to buy into the program. But we'd be looking at doing a mix of kind of our current house on this lab, but also that on an unfinished basement. The biggest thing though is we would give the option. We know that there are some individuals interested in building who have trouble getting approved for construction loans. They'd get approved for the mortgage, but not the construction loan. So, we could operate as a developer in that capacity. So, they wouldn't all have to be kind of the design we're currently doing if there was someone who pre-qualified to purchase the house and wanted a specific house built. So, basically, so yeah, looking at 10 houses over two years, starting in 2023, the goal would be to sell as many as possible. Houses will only be built in cities that choose to participate. So, you guys are the first city I'm coming to. I'll be in Stafford next week at their council meeting. Getting on Hudson's agenda, I'm already on Maxville's for their July 11th meeting. So, if not all the cities choose to participate, that would change then warehouses are built as well. And so, kind of the ask from the city is an annual contribution over a six-year period. We know that it's hard for you to probably do a larger commitment all at once, and so that was kind of the thought, to be able to spread it over time, to make it more feasible, and then to supply the land for development, or the land could be privately supplied as well, which that's what St. John and Stafford has continually done, is with the land banks and other mechanisms, has been easily able to provide lots to do infill.
The money that, sorry, the money that would be acquired from the sale or rent of properties would go in like St. John's specific funding to be able to continue? Or is it going to still be a big pool?
It will more or less be a pool, so some of it's going to factor on where's the ma- so again, there's kind of the base, and then most likely it will be partly pushed on demand. So, if we have more people interested in buying in say St. John, then more housing will be happening here. So, if a house sells here, there will probably be that. I can't guarantee that right at this moment, there's still a lot in flux. But it will be driven on kind of demand from people wanting to buy. Like if we can essentially somewhat pre-sell houses, like have people lined up, then that's where the development will occur. Besides kind of the base, like we do want to guarantee kind of those kind of minimum amounts, so you know what is part of kind of, if we commit this, we're for sure getting like four houses here. You know, if Maxville contributes, they're for sure getting two houses. But there'd be the flexibility to move forward.
So, was this 208,500?
That would be, that's-
Is that based off of the houses that you've already built? That's to build those four houses in St. John?
So, that doesn't cover the full cost of any house. So, where we came up with the numbers was based off population. It's roughly $25 per, you know, person in the cities is kind of how that number came up. And part of that's just to figure out how do you cash flow the project to be able to carry it out. So, where we're currently setting out, which it's so hard because things can change six months from now, but like our current house design has been coming in more at a total cost of $135,000. And what we were quoted on to put it on a basement is going to probably put it about 200, 205. The thing is, we have our, we have a fixed contract price, but then like you have additional things like lawns, deed work surveys, stuff like that, that kind of gives some of the fluctuation. But right now, we've been coming in around the 135 on this lab, but we're told it's going to be about 200,000 to do it on an unfinished basement.
I was just curious how you came up with that number.
Right, yeah.
What's the, how will they use, like what's the process to be able to, for someone to buy?
So, if the house is done, it would just be like selling it, transferring, you know, ownership like you would a normal house. If we're doing more of the custom design, or before the house is complete, we'd enter into a development agreement that is kind of guaranteeing that like if we develop, like, the person will purchase.
So, you want, so someone's going to be, before construction starts, they're going to be purchasing it?
No, I mean, the transaction of the actual purchase wouldn't happen until the house is completed. And it's like, here's the keys because it's done.
But then how do you pick who, how do you know who's going to be the owner or who's buying it? Like, how's that process done?
So, right, so what, so essentially, once we have a sense of if or what cities are choosing to participate, and that we're able to carry this out, we'll put that out to see where there is interest, if there are people who really would like to go ahead and buy. So, if they are interested in buying ahead of time, again, you're signing kind of a development agreement, where it's just looking at like they have the financial position to be able to make the purchase, like a bank would, you know, allow for a mortgage. And then it would, you wouldn't actually sell the house until it was completed.
So, what if there's three people that are interested in it? How do you decide which person gets it, whoever comes up with the money?
I mean, I think it's going to kind of be putting out the information and then relatively working off a first-come, first-served basis. If there's input or people, like that process hasn't been fully like developed, so if there is feedback that the city would like to see, like, we're open to suggestions on how that would be.
Are these houses based on one-bedroom, two-bedrooms?
So, the current house design is a three-bedroom, two-bath house. If it goes on an unfinished basement, we'd put two egress windows in the basement and have a rough-in for plumbing. So, that could potentially then be a five-bedroom house. But the current, what we're talking about is a three-bedroom, two-bath house. And so, I don't need a decision today. I'm happy to answer more questions. I just know it's budget time. So, if you are wanting to participate, it'd be something to kind of budget or plan for, for next year's budget. That's kind of the biggest thing to start bringing it up. If the city's interested in, you know, participating, then we'd probably look at moving forward with like a development agreement or pledge. That allows us then, when we go for the grant funding, to show the documentation of, you know, the commitment at the local level. And then it can also be working out if there's specific interests or priorities you'd like to see in the selection process. For like, if you have, you know, 20 people who want to buy or build a house, how do you work through some of that? So, again, this is kind of the basis. We're still kind of fleshing things out, but some of it's moving because it just depends who's going to choose to be part of the program. Are there more questions I can answer today?
At the end of two years, we'll have four houses, no matter what.
That, that, yes.
And even, and you said they could be rented as well?
Mm-hmm. So, like if, it'd be great if, you know, we're able to sell them. If we're not, then they'll function as rentals. I think that's part of the other balance is, we have a high demand for owner-occupied housing, and we also have a high demand for rental housing. So, it's, I don't know. It's a complicated balance of what to do, but I think the goal would be to sell, because if you can sell, then that allows for more development faster. Doing the rentals, you see, you know, lower return on investment over an extended period of time.
So, just say that you built four houses and all four of them sold. Do you just turn that money and start building more in St. John as well?
So, that would be, there's probably going to be a slight lag because we're going to have to balance out. I currently looking at, so we're going to have to take out some debt to be able to carry out a project. And it's kind of going to depend who else is choosing to participate. But there would be looking at having more housing. And some of it would be, again, still kind of flushing it. It's hard when you don't, you have moving pieces, but if we can feel comfortable taking out a loan at the beginning, if we sell, then it might be just looking at new housing and paying on the existing, you know, kind of mortgage that's out there to continue it. Because the thing is, we need more development, and there's not a lot of funding options for it. And so, I would like to see this as kind of self-sustaining as possible, but there's a lot of variables. I think there's a demand that people will want to buy. It's just who actually, you know, can show up and do the application and all of that to like make sure that that happens. So, that's where it's that great area.
If they have any questions, they can get with me and I can forward them on to you?
Yeah.
Or we can get paper.
And again, some of this is still in development, so if you have ideas or things, and some of that can also be how things get spelled out, you know, if the city chooses to do this, to say, you know, if we have four buyers right away, what does that look like then? So, again, still some of it's evolving, but this is what I can kind of concrete come with you today. And I know you guys are in the planning process, so.
Will these houses be built on separate properties, or they going to be building along, going to take apart?
So, right now, we're still looking at infill. I think if, there's kind of the multi-tier of looking. I think, you know, in five years, we could possibly, probably have the conversation of looking at like a new street development type thing. But right now, we have so much infill, and the cost to get to doing like new street and stuff can be prohibitive. So, I mean, there's ways to look at it, but I think right now, we're looking at doing more just infill. So, looking at where there's houses that are either being torn down or have been vacant, you know, putting in there.
Okay, are they all going to be a uniform house, like you have four different locations in town? They all going to look the same?
They will look roughly the same. I think that's-
But they're going to be on a separate lot?
They'll be on, they'll all be on their own lots. One thing is that where if someone gets in the process sooner and wants to take on additional costs for certain things, like wanting to change the aesthetic, like that would be an option. That's part of the benefit if someone is interested in more having us help be that developer to carry the construction loan essentially. That becomes one piece of it. We're looking at where we can get, you know, kind of affordable, and we know we have a price point. So, if we don't have anyone lined up, this is what we're building because we have the costs figured out. But again, there's that flexibility if you find the person who's interested in purchasing. Okay, any other questions tonight?
Council, any more discussion or question?
Okay. Yep, if you do, let me know, so I'll be happy to chat. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, considering June 30 minutes, regular council meeting, June 6, 2022, inappropriate minutes, 621-2022 for $76,949.88.
I'd make a motion to approve the council minutes from the June 6, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table, all in favor? All opposed? Passes five minutes.
Move to approve appropriation order 621-2022, the amount is $76,949.88.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? All opposed? Electric Department, Jeff Winston.
Couple of things. First, we've been discussing the the option of buying some diesel fuel. We got a notice today from Midwest Energy that there is a chance that there might be some generation in this summer. Just depends on how hot it stays and how long it lasts. So, but there are also, unless, you know, unless it goes into a rolling blackout, it's going to be a deal that you choose by the day if you think you can generate cheaper than what you could buy it. We don't have anything that generates very cheap. I mean, ours all burn straight diesel. We don't burn anything else. And everybody knows that diesel's close to $5 a gallon, even on the end, on the farm end, or on the red diesel end, like what we burn. So, you know, the cost would, the cost would have to get pretty high before it would even be prohibitive for us to generate. Oh, might be a deal of one to five or something, you know, if they do roll. But right now, we've got about 7,000 gallons in our west tank, which is a summer tank. But the road department's using fuel out of it too, and we just wonder if this is a time to jump and buy a transport load of fuel, or, you know, it just doesn't look like it's going to go down. So, you know, I'm kind of at a loss for, you know, we don't budget that kind of money for a load of fuel anymore. I mean, we used to budget 30,000, and we dropped it to 25, and then now it's down to 20 is what we budget for that. And a load of fuel's about 31,000. But everything else has been a train wreck as far as budget-wise anyway. I mean, we're out of gas money, we're out of everybody's money. I mean, it's just one of those things, but that's why I come to you to see, you know, how you feel about it. Like I say, we've got about 7,000 gallons, but those two engines together will burn between 250 and 275 gallons an hour. So, it wouldn't take long to go through 7,000 gallons if we had to. And then that, you know, with the road department using, they use everything out of those tanks too. I mean, everything that doesn't have a tag on it gets fueled out of there too, so.
How much fuel can you hold down there?
15,000 on each tank. The east tank, we keep for a winter tank. So, we try not to put any summer fuel in and dilute it anymore, you know. But the west tank, the summer tank, like I say, it's got just a shade over 7,000. We could take a 6,500 load and put us right to the top or off of clothes. That's what we took the last time at $2 a gallon.
I mean, you know, it's-
How much you said the tank hold?
They hold 15,000. Short load would be 6,000, 6,200, somewhere in there, you know. It'd still be close to 30 grand in any way you look at it. And I told Justin today, when I talked to him, I said, you know, what do you think? He said, I think on the high end, 490. He said the low end, maybe as low as 485. You know, they're only going to quote it for the day. That's all they're going to quote it for, so.
We still have the $20,000 in there that we budgeted, don't we?
Still there, yeah. Yeah, we haven't taken any fuel this year.
Is that just coming out of your?
Comes out of my power plant budget. But then the rest of it, you know, we usually rob some from the street. They all pay for that too, but, you know, we also have to take into consideration that we have fuel trucks. So, out of that, out of what they have, which is 10 or 12,000, I think is what the budget is for them. But, you know, every time we fill the truck, like, it goes down, so.
What do you, how many hours you take to be running in December? It's hard, hard to tell.
We don't. We don't run.
Oh, I thought you-
The only time we run, the only time we run is when we, when we approve our generation, usually in August, and that's only for an hour.
Right, right. Last year, how long did you have to run them when we were?
It was cold?
Yeah, when it was cold.
56 hours.
We have about 95 in the west street.
We ran 56 hours in that real cold weather, that's what we're in.
Just wanted to play around with it. We got over on the west. Putting 20 from-
How much is?
20 in the power plant, and then we have 95 in the street. The diesel still?
Let's just say. See how much you generate. Like, I don't, it's hard to tell. They don't want to roll the dice on 31,000. Then they drop two days later.
I do.
And we can always hope it will go down.
Did he get, did he tell you the price of what it was today, four, five?
No. He just said it hadn't been moving much, and he said it probably be between 485 and 490 is what he said. So.
If you ever run two days solid, we're out of fuel.
How quick can you get a tanker load? Very quick or hard to?
You know, when we got that last load, we got it within about six hours, but, you know, I don't know.
That's definitely bringing in tanker load.
Being farm season, you know, and that, I just don't know. I mean, that's really the only way for us to buy it, is to buy it by the tanker, you know. We can take it, bobtail all the time, but- I mean, if we start to have to generate, we call, hopefully we can get someone. Usually if they can't haul to us, they have, they contracted out to somebody. I mean, we could get it, we could get it in 12 hours, I'm pretty sure. But I just sat on the way, you know, I don't care. It just, like you said, it's kind of like rolling the dice. We just don't know what to do.
31,000, 6,500 gallons is 477 a gallon.
Isn't that like farm fuel?
Farm diesel's only 3 cents cheaper than regular fuel.
We get, we get federal tax off, but that's all we get off, you know. What is it, 18 cents? 17 cents, whatever it is, yeah. I think that's the only thing we get off of that, is federal tax.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, yeah.
We started buying in January.
Doing it now. We got three bucks a ton, we had to generate all the time. During the winter time, we bought diesel like $1, yeah.
Well, with the number one in it, we paid two bucks. What we paid all the way there, I mean, it was 50, 50, it was pretty good fuel. So. I mean, I'll be glad to sit on it. You know, if we, if the need arises and we have to buy something on short notice, I mean, we can work it out somewhere.
How much is in your other type of job?
About the same, about, somewhere between seven and eight.
But that's winter diesel?
That's winter fuel, yeah.
Worst case scenario, if we don't buy a load down, it runs out.
Burns a little hot, but we can do it. I mean, we can, yeah, we can run it. That still gives us one tanker load. I mean, we got, we got one, one, one-
It's always a backup anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we got, we got 15,000 gallons, basically. That's what we got. We crack them open halfway and blend them together, I guess, I don't know. I never tried it, but I guess we could. So, clean the tanks out anyway. Be glad to. Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's crazy. The other thing is, we started pulling our four-out wire for that underground in between First Street and Second. We got 309 feet in, and we got hung. Couldn't get out. We don't know whether we got, we had a egg shape in the pipe. We don't know whether we got, we had a egg shape in the pipe or what happened, but we ended up right on the north side of the alley about 20 feet. So we kept the pipe open and we've got it pulled up in the alley. We've set up to set a cabinet in there, but what that did by pulling that up there was it shorted the far end of having enough wire to get clear to the top. So I'm going to have to buy some wire. I called Wesco this morning. He has a 668 foot reel, which is enough to do those three, those three phases. And he'll sell it to me at the same price he sold the other in January, which was, oh gosh, six, six something, but it comes out to 4268 is what it comes out to for that reel. Just in a few cents and it's in the tax. So, and they've got it available. I can call and get it shipped, but otherwise we're half done and here we sit, so. It's just a deal we had planned on. We went through when we board, we went through the bottom of three trees and we went through, you know, a bunch of stuff and it just, I mean, it was just a deal we've got. It hung tight enough that I hooked my pickup onto it and these chain links that you take that you thread together. I took a quarter inch one and straightened it clear out with a pickup. That's how tight it was, so. We couldn't pull it forward, we couldn't pull it back. So we've got the south end out. We've got it brought up down in the alley. We just need to go back in and break the other half up, so. We need approval to buy some wire, so.
I'd make a motion for Jeff to apply some primary wire amount to 4,000, $268.
Got a motion on the table on a second. Some more discussion? All favor? All opposed?
I think my bad news is over. That's all I have.
But being said, any more questions for Jeff that you guys got? God in the room? Jason?
I just have one on the sewer and one on the streets. One of the sewers mayor called me, sat there and found out that there was three blocks of 10 inch of sewer pipe and then one block of 12. That raised the prices up, so he was, he called me, called us, whoever, and sat there and refigured his bid and to make that, continue with the eight inch, all the eight plus those two, it's going to raise that bid 35,936 dollars and 45 cents. He sat there and said we could probably swap some eight for quite a bit of eight to finish up the 10 and 12 because I want those two done. That's down by Bob's place and all part of seven. And I'd like to get those two done.
Yeah, I think we're too far committed to back out.
Those are the ones we got.
We have a price 1085 or something. 35, sales tax. Didn't have to, did we? 35? Well, we, we, they extra 35. Because didn't we kind of have that? We took this much out of sewer replacement, the rest out of sales tax.
What was in sewer replacement, better?
Because we didn't want to complete it, so we did, we set a number and we left that behind and took the rest out of sales tax. Which I agree where we got it, probably should do it, but it's that project to be a. We just can't figure out where. Which I think it has to come, probably out of sales tax because I think we have, I can't remember what we were comfortable with leaving in there.
Right.
160 is enough, sewer plus.
Really like 35,000 or something. So did we take 250 out of the sales tax?
It wasn't 250.
Or was it like 185 plus 75, like 250? It was well over 200, wasn't it?
The new, the new one, the, the one we bid separate was now, it, which is now, it's, it would be 91,219.95. And then the rest of them, the bigger section that we did, did the small one and the big ones is 213, 857. 90.
The first one, when we put it both together, it was 265, 671, 40.
I have the splits on there of where it came from. I don't remember what we did. I just thought we left behind just a certain amount of money that we felt comfortable with and then the rest came out of sales tax, so we probably can't pull it. Probably wouldn't want to pull more out of the sewer replacement for this year, right?
Right, yeah.
Basically, 35,955. And 1% is that. So probably, we've taken 65 out of it for daycare. That isn't reflected yet and we took probably 135 for this project maybe. Or at least 100 probably.
I think it was right at 100. And that's sitting at 368.
We got the grocery store to come out of there too.
In October.
50,000. I don't get technical on the minutes, let me see.
I think we'll be okay for another 35, but yeah, we probably need to total up what we're, what's our payables out of there just so we have an idea of what's left in there.
Yeah.
Because we've committed to a lot, but it's not reflecting on that.
Right, yeah.
And then the guy said that the 1% sales tax is at the end, like somewhere 14, 15 miles, that much?
Roughly.
Maybe a little bit less than that.
I think in the summer months it might generate a little bit more and there's more going on, but typically like 2,500 dollars comes out of that and goes, you know, back to your.
So we did 30 capital projects, 131 on sewer replacement and 101 on 1%.
So we got 101 of 65 out right now.
101 out of 1%.
So basically it'll be 200,000. If we do this 35 out of there, you know, which I think we have to. So I believe this was 368 in there.
There is 368.
What was that? Going towards the main structure of the city. We've already committed ourselves to this, I think you can do it. He said 35, 696 is the exact.
35, 936, 45. 35, 936, 45.
I'd make a motion to to accept the revised bid with, for mayor for the sewer project with an additional 35,936 dollars, 45 cents to come out of the 1% sales tax fund.
Got a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All favor? All opposed?
And on the street part of it, I'm pulling the ditches out there on North Prairie. And would like to get some culverts for out there and the price on those is 3,415. There's three sections, or three parts. And I'm going to have to cut those in half because I'm putting 30, 30 feet long ones, two of them and 25 feet on one of them. And I'm going to have to cut those two in half for bands because they're just going to be too long to haul back. So they're going to be, it's for the, it's going to be the two, six flares, two bands and then three sections of culvert.
Those are the culverts to go underneath the driveway to the truck park.
No, no, that's just for North Prairie. There's actually five. There's actually five. Two of them are not too bad, but these other ones, they're crushed, they're rotted on the side. They're just not that good.
I don't see some of the money's there for them. What did you say the total was on that, Jason?
3,415.
I'd make a motion to allow Jason purchase culverts for North Prairie at the price of 3,415 dollars.
Got a motion and a second on the table? Any more discussion? All favor? All opposed? Has a problem now?
That was the main thing I need to talk about.
Any questions for Jason?
Vehicle off.
No questions for Jason? Moving on. Police chief Tori is not here.
Nothing for either of the chiefs? Nothing for Tori?
Bar chief Michael Sanders in here? City minister Jamie?
Uh, we need to look at either bringing the budgets to the meetings and going over a couple of them a night or scheduling a budget workshop.
What did we do last year? Get split them up for a good amount of funds.
I think we did a workshop.
Yeah, we worked on last year, yeah.
It would probably be easier than here to just sit down and do it on a certain date instead of trying to do a little bit here and a little bit there because it's going to be. I don't think it'll be as easy as the years past. So I think having everything in one place so you can look at everything at one time would be easier.
So when do we have to have it finalized? By the end of July?
August.
End of August.
Middle of August. So I'm just going to put this in your ear. You guys start thinking about dates and getting some dates to me and then I can coordinate all of those and we can. Make it work.
Any comments for Jay, for Jamie or questions? Anything else?
What about the stuck guy? Alcrad?
What is this?
I get a little. Please. Click the please.
Well, they have to.
Do we have that?
Alcrad, no. I thought we just determined that's what we were going to do.
We just, we just have, it hasn't been a motion or anything. It hasn't happened. Thought we had to get together and list. What those fees were.
I mean, it's a building permit fee, the sewer tap fee, the water tap fee. So those three things.
The only thing I think is we probably need to have something on record that we're willing to do that for you. That'd be my only thing.
And you, you could vote on it maybe in minutes. That's why there just needs to be a vote.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I think we just, I mean, just showing that's what we're going to do or whatever.
Guess you can mount the meter in the ass for that too.
I hope you do it. I bought the meter cancelled.
But I mean, the price isn't, it's not a set price because we can't. The price for him to do some of his stuff is not determined until it's done.
Right.
I mean, we probably have the wiring stuff already in stock. The only other thing we're going to have is some under, is some.
All I'm saying is we probably just need to have something in our minutes stating that we voted on it and agreed to do this for you. That's all I'm wondering.
So make the motion of waiving the building permit fee and the water tap and electric meter.
Make the motion to waive the sewer tap fee, building permit fee, water tap and electric meter.
That's the motion.
Yeah.
Got a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion about the utility for David Pop? All favor? All opposed? That's his five now. Anything else, Jim?
The dates, as far as time, like how long, like.
Does he have?
For the, the, like, budget.
Oh, right, um.
Like how?
I mean, the sooner the better. The sooner we get started on it.
Okay, but when you're not going to date, how much time do we need?
Oh.
I mean, in previous. I mean, we're probably going to cut it.
How much time are we taking to do?
I'd say two to three hours tops. Like in a day. Like, we don't need to go over that because I just feel like we would be, you would lose.
Two or three hours one night.
Yeah, and if we need to go further.
If we need to have multiple days, I would.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
But I, yeah, I think if we went over time.
I know when I first, the first year I was on council, I think we spent like four and a half or five hours in the bottom of the library.
On Saturday, wasn't it?
And by the end of it, you didn't even have a clue what you were doing, what you were talking about. It's just way too much.
Maybe try to figure out some date and next council meeting first and apply and then try to get it and apply.
Right, right.
Everybody get time.
Yeah, a couple hours.
Yeah, I think if you try to do it longer than that, I mean, the budget's confusing enough for a lot of people that.
It is, they're talking about multiple bunches of first things.
Send it out. The intervention prior to.
Any other questions? Jamie? John, you got anything? Anything on the whole business property, 647 East Fifth or 651 East Fifth?
Those are torn down and hauled away. Person still has a little bit of tree and dirt work, but for the most part they're done. We're going to, we can remove them, please. And I'll get started on the rest.
Do we have any ETA about this? How much, how much for the center should we come in for?
No.
Is them, is them street properties or related?
No, so that's still, that's still, um, the property owners.
We just assess the, the fees to the property as a lead.
Any other questions on the property? Moving on to truck parking. Anybody want to talk about that? Engine for the power plant?
Guys were here a little bit the other day doing some work. He said probably two weeks they'd be back here for, to get going, get started, probably get that before they leave, so.
Come in full? These bits open. Black truck repairs? Anything on the business?
Still waiting on the statement.
New business, 4th of July. I think we're looking for some hours. I think we're looking for some hours.
One request, let's not spend forty-five minutes on this, please, and John bursted my bubble earlier, we're gonna have to have a special meeting, because we have to have a resolution that we didn't do last year.
For what?
Well, can they have this that meeting?
Are you sure?
We have to do this...
It's in ord, yeah, in ordinance, that we have to have a resolution for the hours. And I went back and looked from last year, we didn't do anything, so...
They're gonna choose the hours and then prepare the resolution.
So I, I actually asked about, sorry, it's on Monday.
Is that a, are you, is that a motion?
This is like, what's we ask to...
Because it falls on a Monday, and a lot of people...
Wanna have a Fourth of July party?
Yeah, on Monday, or over the weekend, and so, yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Do we have to set some hours, maybe, you need to set some hours on that, so, from what to what?
You know what, Saturday, I don't, I don't go out here on a Saturday, but I think Sunday you ought to start at noon.
After church?
After church.
After church, okay, yeah.
So I would say from midnight on Saturday till noon on Sunday, there's no fireworks. You want to say eight o'clock Saturday morning to midnight?
There you go.
Midnight on Sunday, and then... Eight to midnight on Monday?
What'd you say for Sunday?
Twelve to twelve, noon to midnight.
On Sunday?
On Sunday.
Okay, on Saturday, eight to midnight?
Eight to midnight, yeah.
Yeah? And then Monday would be eight to midnight?
No matter what we do, it's...
They don't know what you're mad at.
Well, it covers, it covers all three nights.
Okay, we got a motion on the table?
Second.
We got a second? Any more discussion? All opposed? All, all opposed? Passes by now. You opposed it? I'm sorry. Well, keep voting.
I'm the two-day guy.
I wasn't even gonna bring it up, though, I was gonna do Fourth of July, it was the Fourth of July this year.
That's not what we had to do.
How's it gonna put on a resolution?
So, then we have to have a special meeting and pass that?
I was not bringing it, I'm just talking about diesel, because she wanted to wait to talk about diesel until then, but, she's gonna have to call a special meeting, too.
I don't press it. I want to jump back to Jamie's position for a second. They do have all of our cameras put up in town. I think they finished today.
I think they did.
Just in that way...
This one was the last one, I think.
I think they've got everything done with our cameras in town, so... Just see if that's not happening.
So everyone be careful.
Want to bring this down to, I didn't take a motion, we're in executive session, if you want to do that?
I'll make a motion for a ten-minute executive session for non-elected personnel to discuss potential hire, to include counsel, attorney, everybody at the table, Jeff, to reconvene at eight oh five.
We got a motion and a second on the table for an executive session. All favor? All opposed? Passes by now. Second session?
I'd make a motion that we return to executive session for non-elected personnel to discuss potential hire with the same people for five more minutes, to resume at eight eleven. I'll step out this time, if you don't mind, there's gonna be for me to stay.
All favor? All opposed?
Thank you. I'd make a motion to hire Curtis Smith at twenty-eight dollars per hour on the ninety-day evaluation, um, for the line, for the electric department, pending his acceptance of the position.
Second.
We got a motion on the table and a second? All favor? All opposed? Passes by now.
Should we start raising our hands?
Huh?
Should we start raising our hands?
We always done that.
Yeah.
Just curious.
I think they both done it.
Well, when we were on the camera, only we were saying yes or no, right, everybody could see.
Okay, fine.
Is that all business? I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second on the table, we adjourn? All favor? All opposed?
All right.
See you later.
Bye.
Bye.